That's what I laid on your desk.
Yeah.
Who? Oh, the deny. I have no idea. You'll have to ask Carrie about that. Yes, yes. We can try that if you think it will work. Well, you can watch it too then if it's happening or not on your laptop.
They'll be able to see us talking. They just won't be able to hear us, so.
There's no way of closing the video? You could turn off the video. Video unmuted. Okay, it is nine AM. I'm going to call this meeting of the Cottonton County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Vanduzen. He would lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a note that we are streaming live on YouTube. We still will allow individuals to call in if they have public comment on issues that are not on the agenda. The two phone numbers are eight eight two six two four eight and eight eight two six two nine seven. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Any on the agenda for commissioners?
No.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Vanduzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Not motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. That motion carries. Monthly reports are... We'll just move to Rick since Steve isn't up here yet. Our highway superintendent.
Morning, Rick.
Morning, Rick.
Good morning. Not a whole lot to report for last month, which is kind of nice. Sanders been out a few times. They're out right now. We had to go out Saturday morning. That last storm that came through from the interstate going east, it was icy. The rest of the county wasn't, didn't hardly have anything. It was just from the interstate going east, all the way from one end to the other. So we had Sanders go out Saturday morning and take care of that. Then the sun poked out, so that helped clean that up. Now they're all icy again, so. The Riprap project on eight one is coming along. They've roughly hauled eight thousand, or not eight thousand, five thousand ton so far. They've still got some more to do, then they'll move up to four one south of Wallace where that's at. You guys have been out cutting trees when we can, when we don't have to go out and sand. Banner Associates is working on engineering a bridge on seven five, just a few hundred yards from where we did the Riprap project this fall. That bridge needs a new deck on it, and we've still got that hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that the state allocated us in two thousand and nineteen. We have to use that up. We have three years to use that up. So either this summer or next, early next year, we'll do that. It's roughly about a three hundred thousand dollar project.
And that money is tied specifically to that project, correct?
Not specifically to that project, but it has to be used on a bridge.
I see. Okay, all right.
But we have to use it or we lose it, right? It's one of those kind of deals. And we received a call. I'm not exactly sure what organization it is, but this summer in Florence, they'd like to close Main Street, probably by the fire hall there for a gun raffle. And I'm just letting you guys know. They'll let me know more what the details are. They didn't have a date. It was July or August, so.
Why would that affect us?
That's a county road.
That road in front of the fire department is Main Street? Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay, but the event is taking place within a municipality, so.
But I'm just letting you know, so there's no big surprise when Main Street in Florence is closed and they want to know why.
We might be concerned if it's July and August. But if it's in July or.
They're going to let me know more information as it gets closer, but they just wanted to let us know if that would be a problem. So you could probably have an easy detour in town there, so. It's all, but that's.
I didn't know that. I didn't know that the whole road was a county road through there. That's interesting.
On the west side of town, on the west side of the school, that's a county road too.
Right, yeah, I knew that was. I didn't know Main Street was. Okay.
Did you get that email that I forwarded to you, okay? And I'm not sure where that's even at.
That's south of Tinkertown. That was a stretch of road that we built up. And the motor grader, when he has a chance, blades it, tried to smooth it up. But the other day I was down there and here it was semi about sixty miles an hour through there. The rough didn't bother him at all, so. We've got two of those spots. One is six miles north of Henry on eight one A, right by the county line, and then this one is south of two twelve on twenty-three six.
Is there any way to fix it?
What's that?
Is there any way to fix it?
Yeah.
Just hold what's grabbed.
Pave it.
Pave it.
Which will hopefully happen this summer, so. There's a stretch in there that's about twelve hundred feet long that we've built up, and the paving crew was too busy to get it done this year, so.
I don't know if any of you, did the rest of you get that email?
I did.
And it was just, an individual was just concerned because it wasn't marked. Driving on blacktop and then hit that stretch of gravel, so.
Yeah, and it's, we built it up with re-ground material and that's what's on it, so it's still black. And when the, last week when it was warm enough, it went and shaved some of it. Same way with the gravel. We had decent enough weather, so the blades were out blading last week. Trying to get things smoothed up because the last few months have been dry. And we had washboards and good stuff like that, but, so hopefully we can, it'll warm up again tomorrow and we can get in there and smooth it up again, so.
Right, and you are putting signs out, you mentioned as well.
We had signs up earlier and somebody shot the lights off, so. We kind of took them down and we're going to put them back up, try it again, so. That's about all I have for right now, so.
Thank you.
Pretty tough to get them smooth.
Yeah, especially when you go from pavement to gravel or re-ground material, it just, if it's, traffic can stay nice and slow, it wouldn't be an issue, but they just sail through there, so.
Cleans all the crud off the bottom of your car.
Yes, it does.
It should be seventy miles an hour.
No, no, I mean, that's what people figure. Yeah, yeah. I'm not saying to make it seventy miles an hour.
Thanks, Rick. All right, we will move on then to facilities manager with Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning.
Morning, Steve.
You got staff coming to you, I guess. Okay, we'll start out in the government building here. The FOB system, actually the, up in the second floor or so, they love it. They, no more actually grabbing keys, so I've gotten a lot of good compliments for the FOB system up there. Detention center, currently right, or enter, just in the last recent few weeks, the staff had moved their, the computers and should say the camera system into another room because it was getting too hot in a little closet that they were, that they had it in. They moved it in and built a cage in another room so it would be secure and so have no heating issues of the computer systems. Currently also with Lee is we are a budgeted item for the casting to have a lining done. That was a budgeted item. Lee is in the process. We'll probably work together a little bit on getting a bid sheet.
Yeah, so we're talking about, we're talking about the sewage pipe.
Yep.
And so, and it's basically deteriorating and there are these, you might have seen it at some of the county conventions where they, they can actually inject a sleeve into the pipe. Saves a lot of trouble. It's a little pricey, but there's a lot less disruption and less digging, so.
Yeah, especially the biggest thing is in the walls and the floors. I mean, otherwise you have to rip all that out and stuff and that would be a lot of money and a lot of, lot of extra cost.
Yeah, so excellent job. It does that. Works well. So we need to do an effort, but it's well over the threshold for, for, so we definitely have to bid it.
Right, so, yep. Ag building. The barn is all set up for the farm show. I know Jody had to get up, to serve lunch. She had to have a, a program set up that was authorized by SDSU, so keep safe distancing and stuff like that. She's got that all lined up and done, and I know they're getting things set up for that, or will be getting that set up. Also, working on some quotes for the finish, the flooring in the hallway and the second meeting room, plus the bathrooms, and getting some quotes done to redo, remodel a little bit on the bathrooms. Kind of looked at doing the, doing a handicap and it just, it's really, really tough. So I think we're just going to upgrade them. There are two accessible handicap spots. It would be a little more convenient if they would be up in the front, but it's really tough to do in that facility without having a big amount of expense. And the weed department had a weed board meeting on Wednesday. The board had decided to go with the annual weed board meeting. It will be held on February twenty six, or twenty-fourth, excuse me, the last Wednesday of February at six PM.
February twenty-fourth?
February twenty-fourth, yep, last, last Wednesday. We are not going to have it in the kitchen. We're going to actually have it in the expo, expo one, so they have a little more room for social distancing. I know a lot of other meetings are being set up in there that we used to be primarily in, some of the classrooms and kitchens also out there. Finished my state reports, got them all turned in to Department of Ag. And then I will be, I have it on the agenda for attending the Sioux Falls Farm Show. It would be, got to look at the calendar here.
The travel request is in today.
Yep, and that would be on Thursday, the twenty-eighth, I believe it is. Typically, I always work the Friday, but, and then take the, the, all the boost stuff back with me for the Watertown Farm Show, but beans that didn't need to, actually, some of them from Department of Ag are going to take that back too with them, so. Park, been working on the online system. We should pretty well have that up and ready going by next week for sure. We have to meet with him on Thursday again for final setup and then some little bit of training. One thing that I have also is I'm adding, have a couple rules that's on the agenda to add on to our park rules and stuff. Then also getting quotes for the bathhouse, the last bathhouse, for the roof and floor, to put that coating on the floor. We're trying to get these floor coatings done. Not a lot of action going to be happening in like April, first part of May at the extension, and hopefully the park floors will be warmed up enough if we have to add a little heat to get that up there. By then, hopefully to get every, all the project done. And one of the advantages is of this outfit that we've had done in the past is doing a project for Sharps, and they will be working on that project at that timeframe also, so that will help alleviate some costs, extra added costs for their travel and stuff, so. Have to go and start working on the contract with our park managers for this coming year. That's, that's due again. And then I'll be looking at site and building fees for two thousand and twenty-one. A couple things that was suggested by the online system, which they were kind of surprised that we don't have a little extra fee for right by the lake. It is a very popular item. It usually seems like it's the first one that moves all the time. They were surprised that being you don't have something that's close by the lakeside.
Lakeside, yeah.
Area, and so we had, so we'll be looking at a couple of those things and determining what we might do, and I'll come back to you guys on that stuff. And then, I don't know if Cindy can find out for sure, but the park budget was spent this last year was a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and sixteen, twenty-eight. And according to what Walls have, what they had on their books, was a hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-six of revenue back from, from the park. Now, I know Cindy says sometimes those numbers don't seem to go along with what they show all the time, but, but that's close relative. I mean, we have to compliment that actually, one thing is COVID being a bad thing, but the COVID actually created a huge revenue for parks. And of course, that created it throughout the whole state also. Tourism was way up in South Dakota, and of course, parks are going to be one of the things that was a lot of it attributed to.
Did you ever hear anything back after we raised the camping rates out there? Did you hear?
There's a couple of them. There's a couple of them. They, a couple of them, probably the biggest gripe was is, is having that they have to prepay, especially seasonals. Yeah, so coupled with the rates a little bit, but it's still incomparable, you know? If I want to compare it, you know, some of those spots are cheaper than, than, you know, the, the city park is, especially those drive-throughs. The, probably, ah, I lost my train of thought. I guess it's, it's no big deal right now, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
We'll discuss the next item, action to approve the new rules at Memorial Park, if you want to.
I guess I don't have that sheet, but. Okay.
They're getting through the minutes because the payroll resolution.
All right, additional on there would be is no personal property may be attached to county property with the exception of a temporary sign or flag stand on the site ground. And then also, gas, electric-powered ATV scooters and golf carts must be operated by a licensed driver only and carry no more than the vehicle recommends. Some of this stuff I actually pulled off of the state website, which their rules are, is a lot similar. I'll probably have, I need to have Becky kind of see if this thing words correctly to be put on there, but that's the just of what, what I plan on, what's going on for the rules. I know there was a topic last year because of some flags that were attached to the trees and stuff like that, so we want to kind of eliminate those things. But yet, we want to have it so that people can have their, you know, a flag with a PCV pipe or whatever, you know, some of them have, or like little signs like this, you know, their name with camping, love camping, those kind of things, still yet they're permissible, but.
So this is not the final version?
Yeah, not exactly. I need to have Beck. I want to have Becky so it can be exactly, but that's the, basically the just, I just want to have it word correctly so that's, we don't run into an issue, wow, you didn't, you know.
Steve, what is the enforcement mechanism going to be to enforce the, you have to be a licensed driver to operate?
I think it's more or less that they can see, they are probably going to have to, and then maybe we'll have to probably contact Sheriff's Department if, if not. I think it's going to be more or less a verbal deal to the parents that are there.
By park management?
Yes, by park management out there to, you know, oversee and, you know, and go talk to the, that's what they kind of more or less said what they'd do, so then if nothing was done.
It's a park rule more than.
It's a park rule.
Than a revision in our ordinance.
Yes, yes. It's no ordinance, it's just a park rule.
Signage or whatever, give some of that answer.
Yeah, we're going to have signage. I'm going to get some signs. I want signs put as, and if you get in the entrance of the park, those rules are there, and I would also, I want to have a sign, put all the rules at the main office also.
That could ruin the game of how many kids can you haul on a golf cart.
That's always been a concern of mine. Every time I've been out there, a lot of times when I was out there over the past summer, I would see kids riding around on golf carts and stuff throughout the park. And most of the time, they were on the road and they were doing it safely, but I often worry about somebody coming around the corner in a vehicle and hitting one of those things. And so I am concerned about that, and I think it's good that we're addressing that now.
Right.
Yeah, to make sure it's a licensed individual that's operating them as.
And that gets us in line with the state park system.
Right.
Rules as well.
And although one thing that's not on here, that state parks actually, they actually require that all those machines have to be licensed also. But not, you know, we're on park grounds. We don't, it's not really a street or anything and stuff there, so.
Question for you, Steve. So what, one thing for Becky, when, on the flag, when you might want to think about putting in, say, county properties and maybe parentheses like this includes trees and, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
And then also, is it, when they say, when you say site ground, is that pretty understood to be that's the campsite?
Their campsite, yeah. And I might have to turn on, that's why I said I need to see.
So you'll come?
Yeah, I'll come back to have it revised.
Yeah, with the exact, but it looks like, I think, I like the direction. I think those are the key points to address, so with the.
The other thing noted is the call-in for reservation hours. They would get calls all the time. They want to kind of set a timeframe of calling hours for reservations. It's not that they won't have the office open, it's just that, they just, when people, if other people came in, they were always on the phone with somebody, and then it always, other people would call and they would get mad because they couldn't call in, so they want to kind of set some rules. One of the other things is, is check in and check out. I got a, I think it was check out and in was noon. We had decided to turn around and go a little bit more with the state parks on that. State parks are four o'clock and when four o'clock, but they wanted a little bit more of a timeframe of, and then state parks, of course, is, is, there's a set time for coming in at the park too, but one of the things was is we wanted to have a little timeframe in case a campsite needs to be addressed a little bit. Where state parks, it's set at four o'clock and four o'clock. Well, this allows them also to go to the party if they haven't left yet to kind of more or less tell them they need to move out because somebody else is moving in, so.
Was there a change in the online versus the call-in reservation fees?
There, there is a change. The online fees will be two dollars. That is one of the things that I want to come to address is, the state parks here a few years ago, they had the online fees and that was it, and that's what we have. But the state parks went with, if you call in, they have a higher fee, and it was more or less trying to influence more people to do online, which creates a lot less office connection. State parks have an advantage. They have a call center, so they have always somebody that's, that's there. Here, we just have staff and stuff, and, and I might become, I'll probably come to approach to have a call in as a fee, and that, and when the state did this, it went, it switched. It used to be online was about forty percent online, sixty percent call in, and when they added these extra fees, it reversed itself and stuff, and just to promote more people. And you're always going to have some people that just going to call in. They, they prefer, it's a little bit complicated trying to get online and stuff, especially the older generation and stuff, but, you know, we want to try to influence more. Plus, why not call in? If you're going to save some dollars, I'll call in, so. But it really creates a time-consuming.
So the fee, so the fee for the online thing, that's, that's imposed by the, by the company that we use for there? That's how they pay?
And we have an option too. It's a two dollar fee. If we want to charge more, they said we can add, and it will just go back to the county for that additional for a fee, but I think we're just going to translate, you know, just basically have that fee, just the offset. We don't need to have that. I just would like to have something, so. So there'd be something for all that extra time. I mean, they'd be on the phone with somebody for half an hour and then, oh, we'll, we'll call you later, and, you know, and then they call later. Well, they consumed all their time and now other people are trying to call in, so we're just trying to influence a little more online.
It's more work. I mean, a phone reservation is more work for our staff.
Right, exactly, and stuff. We're not a hotel where we can have two, three people on a line and booking, you know, and all the time it seems like when it comes to be camping, it's always certain times that they want to call in and they want to, they want to do this, especially if they can pre-book a ninety days ahead. You know, all of a sudden they get the swamp of certain times. Granted, at our, at our park, they can book a year ahead, which kind of alleviates those timeframes, but they had said how many people actually try calling in for those made events, and they're disappointed that we don't, they don't have an opportunity to do that, you know? They're, they have had a lot of calls about that, that people want to come in on those special events, and it's already all been pre-booked a year ahead, and so. Issues trying to, trying to satisfy people, but yet keep things, you know, improving things too is kind of tough. Park is a consuming thing for me.
We got to be careful, you know, of these other fees and so on. We may break even someday. But that's something.
Yeah, that would be something, you know? I mean, we got that park more or less to do for the community and for people. I mean, and stuff, it's a service, you know? It's not that we need to make money, but it's nice to come closer to, to the revenue that we have to. I mean, there's a lot of expense out there.
It's never been a moneymaker for the county, but it's nice if we can get closer.
Yeah.
Probably five thousand dollars difference this year.
Well, roughly. I mean, that could be off. I don't know. She's got more better numbers.
The revenue, I have to look at the revenue as it hits our general ledger. So I have revenue of a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty-five thousand and expenditures of a hundred and ninety-nine, so it's fourteen thousand.
We've ever been that close, have we?
No, no.
No, probably not.
I mean, that's, that's as close as we've ever been.
Like I said, COVID was probably the, was our biggest contributor to that, and nice weather. I mean, you know, what, it'd be in two thousand and nineteen, there's a lot of cancellations because the weather was just in, and sites were flooded and Milo had to do a lot of scrambling out there because of all the wet conditions, so. All right.
It's not spring yet.
So we won't take, we won't take action on that. It's just kind of a.
Yep, yep. I'll get, I'll have Becky look at it a little bit and see if we need to revise just a little bit, so.
Um, I noticed a couple things, you probably need some dates in, or days in here. You've got office call in reservation hours, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and then on Sunday from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Yeah, I'll have to, yeah, I'll have to have Monday through.
You don't have Monday through, and then that last one too, we might have to, is it check in 4:00 to 10:00 PM, Monday through?
Monday through, yes, everything, all that is all Sunday through.
Yeah, probably just add, add a few days.
Okay.
To that.
All right.
All right.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments for Steve?
I can talk to you about this.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Steve. Okay, we'll move on then to item number eight, action to approve auditor's account with a treasure and note monthly registered deeds fees.
The monthly register of deeds fees were $42,838 in the month of December, and then you have the report of the cash and cash items on hand as of the last business day in December. The second page shows you where our cash balances lay within the general fund, special revenue funds, and the service trust and agency funds.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Waterman. Any other questions or comments for Cindy? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number nine, action to approve budgeted operating cash transfers.
So we have a number of funds who do not create enough revenue on their own to sustain their, their operating budget. And we are transferring out of the general fund $1,352,763. That amount will go to the Roden Bridge Fund, $1,050. The emergency management fund will receive $194,141. The victims of crime will need $88,010. When that position was originally created many years ago, there were grant funds available for that. I believe Vince Foley was the state's attorney at the time, and he, he went after those grant funds and, and created that position, and those grant funds disappeared over the years. So the county does fully sustain this fund, and there are no revenues that come into that fund. The WIC fund is partially funded by the state of South Dakota, so we need to transfer in $21,000 to that fund. And I should say that the emergency management fund, also, we receive a portion of Sheri and Jamie's salaries from the state of South Dakota. We receive a grant reimbursement for that, so. These are annual cash transfers set up when we prepare the budget.
Could you repeat that original dollar amount, 1 million, what was it?
1,352,763 will be transferred out of the general fund to Roden Bridge Emergency Management Victims of Crime and WIC.
Thank you.
The other funds are self-sustaining.
So what, what's, what's in the packet about, that we just talked about, that's, that's?
That was the cash balances at the end of December.
So that's, okay, so previous to, okay.
So that's normally when those cash balances will get down. If you look at the victims of crime, there was $8,200 in cash left in there, so we might be able to adjust that when we prepare the budget next year and use up some of that. The emergency management fund, some of that extra cash there is from the CARES Act reimbursements. Plus, I believe the reimbursements for Jamie and Sheri's salaries came in a little bit higher than estimated, which is good. There are some counties who do not take advantage of the LMPG because for some counties, it's a financial burden to go through all of that stuff. There's more and more counties opting out of those grant funds because of the restrictions the state is putting on us and the requirements that Jamie has to go through to even qualify for the grant. So at, when I prepare the budget for 2022, I will look to see where those cash flows are, those cash balances are, and maybe we'll be able to reduce some of those transfers next year.
All right, so I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve those transfers.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number 10, action to adopt arranged land fire resolution to appoint county designees. That be you, Cindy, or Johnny?
Well, actually, this letter came to me, actually, it was addressed to the county commission, I guess it was. This is something, the last time we updated this, I think, was in 2017. So we do have some different names. It's normally the emergency management director, the secretary for emergency management, and the chairman of the board of county commissioners. So I prepared the resolution with those names, and have you received any information on this, Jamie? It's just, they're requesting updated contact information for your commission-appointed designee. Your designee must have authority to obligate county funds in the request for fire suppression assistance. This assistance could be single-engine air tankers, fire engines, hand crews, fire investigators, and/or additional fire management personnel. This is a contract that we have every few years, and it's just kind of a requirement if we need assistance from the state of South Dakota for fire suppression.
So I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay. Have a motion by Gable, second to that motion.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen. Any other comments or questions?
So do, when was the last time that we did this? Do you remember? You said it's every, every?
Resolution, I believe it was 2017.
Okay.
But I understand. So Jim Sutton's name was on there, and Myron's name was on there. Myron was the chair at the time, and Jim was the emergency management director.
So basically, the point of that is just an agreement with, with them?
We have to have designees to contact, right.
Okay, so if we do need assistance, fire suppression, we agree to pay the bill, and it has to be somebody that's authorized to make that decision?
Yes.
Got it. Right.
Yes, yeah, updating of contacts is what it is, basically.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number 11, discussion possible, action regarding pod contract. That would be Jamie. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. I don't have anything new to bring to the table on the discussion of the pod contract, that's appointed dispensation program. The state still seeks contractor guidance along with that. But that is all, that contract typically, what we seek there is federal funding to do the annual exercise program, and that program has been exercised for 15 to 20-plus years. So we're still seeking that, but I did have a nice meeting late Friday afternoon with some new points of contacts, channeling through getting this thing rewritten and done at the state department health side. And we also had Prairie Lakes Health involved with that, because we're technically kind of looking at, Phase 1D is upon us, started this week, as you know on your local media channels. And we're looking at late to mid-February that, as a local community and county specifically, PLH is in charge of distribution of vaccines, so they may just need some help. We may need to activate some smaller pod settings, but there'll be some, you know, I'll have to have meetings with pod managers, what have you, and to get to move forward.
Jamie, just to, just to clarify, you said February for what?
Mid to late February for part Phase 1D of those 65 and older and underlying health condition type people that, you know. It's starting right now, yesterday, with the 80-year-older and, you know, through our local clinics and channels, that direction. If they need some help with the public side of that, is where we're kind of probably leaning. Discussions are currently being done with department of health as far as pods are considered. There's 28 of those programs, and they all lie within the county's things, and I think they should stay in the county's hands. Reason being, in my eyes, for 15 to 20 years, we're accustomed to know where to go for that, exercising that program. For even all the way down where we exercised the influenza A and B shots over the years. And H1N1 was used, what, '09? I believe so. So I'm still working on those, but I do have some new point of contacts out there. But I was also reminded by the state, you know, pods were designed to run on them local and state levels. So they did agree, saying that they'll be at the table with us if these things, and it's a formality spreadsheet that I'll probably preliminary fill out today on activation of a pod, so it's ready. If push comes to show, so that's where we stand on it. We're still working on the, the funding side of it and the contractor side of it, who's the organizer and the planner of that state plan. That's kind of where it stands.
How do you envision, and this is kind of going out, but how do you envision that would work?
That's, there's going to be a lot of modifications to that current pod plan. The social distancing, in fact, the wait periods after you get a vaccination, those things will have to kind of be redesigned. And we're going to need vaccinators. There's two and a half to two hours and 45 minutes of training for those vaccinators. I simply asked the question on the liability sides of those. The state, I think, needs to put a little more teeth into those. We'll cover our facility, our workers, our employees, our volunteers to perform this project, but the public, I think, I don't know, you know, we're, we're still in the makings on that, so.
Yeah, okay.
Moving forward, I hope it, we as a community, and as many times it has been exercised, I think we'll seriously come together. It'll get it done.
The South Dakota Department of Health, Kim Malsum-Ryzen, came out and actually said to refer to the Department of Health webpage for local resources as far as vaccinations are concerned. That's why I was asking about the pod concept of, once you get through the, the 80-plus age group and those that are higher risk, now you're dealing with 65 to 80 that are just normal risk, how are those folks going to be notified, and if it's a pod setting, how are they going to be funneled through a pod?
That's where I think the state needs to come up and step up, kind of like our COVID mask testing. Hopefully, locally, we could channel the medias, the social media aspects of it. But it would be nice to see the state get involved as far as how that played out in masks where there's a registration page. And for those who don't or challenged without internet and rely solely on news, media, radio, TV, what have you, we would set up maybe a call center. I mean, this is just me thinking, planning. We have an EOC, we have telephone lines that would be available, we need a volunteer staff maybe. There's tampons down there.
The greater.
Those are all things that are going to be coming into play, but they're coming fast, and so we need to.
The greater challenge is that repeat dose.
The secondary dose.
And, you know, the state has all those IT mechanisms and that tracking. As per say Prairie Lakes is doing a great job of it too, you know. I think they have a 24-hour window or the next morning to respond and report those to Department of Health.
Yesterday, I got a complete schedule of breakdowns and figures from John Clinic. And I think the reason that I fell into that, I'm not 80 yet, yet, but it's post.
The underlying health side of it?
Yeah, because of my knee replacement.
Sure.
And I think because of that, I fell into that category. And so they were very specific and outlined it, and they said, just sit tight and we'll.
They will contact you.
They will contact me.
So they're, they're doing appointment style settings.
I got the same email, and I'm not going to be qualified for quite a few months.
And I got the same email too, and.
Yeah.
They just sent it.
They're just doing blanket.
Yep, I think they did. Anybody who had an email address with the clinic, they, yep.
Phase 1D looks to be, you know, 265,000 people, according to the state.
That's a lot of people.
So that's going to be a challenge.
How many? Say that again.
265,000. But that's Phase 1D of your 65 and older.
Yep.
Two underlying health conditions, your diabetic, dialysis people, you know, cancer people.
So we're in that phase now?
That's sort of, yes, on 80 and above currently.
So if somebody wants to, thinks they should get a shot, they haven't heard anything, what should they do?
Go to the website.
Go to the website, use those demographics.
Other numbers they can call, because I think some of that population might not be too familiar with.
I believe 211 is handling some of those calls and channeling who to get in contact as well. Department of Health does have quite a bit on their website. You have to be kind of savvy with their website to navigate through it. Typically, you'll see a new section of that, that's an alert.
Yeah, well, if I can say something, while we're on the topic, just for, for our state, I mean, we're, we're tied for number two as far as the, this is as of a few days ago, we're tied for number two after, so West Virginia's got 6.3% of their population vaccinated, so this is as of a few days ago. And South Dakota and Alaska are tied with 5.4%, so for a second, so.
We're leaving the show on vaccinations.
Yeah, so it's still, you know, it's, it's on the state level.
So this, this part though, this that we're in right now, the 1D or whatever, stage or whatever you want to call it, that's for more so, because our, our individuals who have been in the assisted livings and nursing homes, those have been vaccinated already, so these are the general public people living in their own homes.
Correct, and congregate, congregant settings, that is part of Phase 1D, and I believe.
Funeral service directors.
Funeral service directors, teachers and staff, I think is included on 1D as well. Whether there's going to be settings of coming out of the department of health, doing many pod sites like has been done in the past, going to those facilities and handling that, I don't know currently. Like I said, there's a lot, a lot in the making in the next week or two.
What I would encourage people to do is just go to the Department of Health website rather than calling. There's a lot of information on there, and a lot of local information on how to, and timeframes and that sort of thing.
Patients is going to be key, because allocation is still currently coming in, the state is 11,000. Also, I don't know what our exact count numbers are here coming in for Prairie Lakes, but a couple hundred a day, and then it switches up, I don't know. That's, that would be a question added to them. Patients will be key on this, communications, things are all in the making, and, you know, it's.
Everybody will get it eventually.
Correct.
Just be patient.
Yep.
All right.
All right.
It'll be an allocation, you know, you look at 2019 status, what I've looked up on the US Census Bureau, Cottington County has 28,009 residents. That was the most current, 65 and older, 18.3%. You do the math on that, we're looking at 5,100 people. How many of those have been already vaccinated thus far, 65 and older? Those are challenges. I think the state has those numbers, I hope, so.
Yeah.
But they, they, on that meeting on Friday, said that we ask and, and we go from there, you know. So there'll be some backbone of them in, coming into play on this, I firmly believe that, so. Hopefully, we'll move forward with it, and it'll be a smooth operation.
Yes.
It's just a matter of timing, you know, and like I said, people are accustomed to where our local pod is, and that's kind of getting the sense from my other emergency managers, that's what the state's looking at is. We've all, we've exercised these numerous times, they're proven to work.
Well, that's the reason behind having a pod.
Correct.
Pod exercise.
Department of Health, I would hope, would step up with that, and maybe with a little state emergency management help, they'll be the subject matter in the operation, and logistics is what we do.
Right.
Very good. Well, we'll move, move on to 12, I think that's probably yours, or.
That is mine, next two items are mine.
Yeah. Action to approve the application of the Homeland Security Grant Funds.
Those are typically an annual, this is just for me and my office, Sheri, to move forward in applying for these funds. That's the Homeland Security money, 25% of that or better, I don't remember, goes to law enforcement. Typically, in the March and the campaign these last couple of years has been on applying for radios. The state will change their digital system to P25 complacency, I'm still learning as I go with that. So that is basically just for us to apply for these funds, and those are all based on our population status. Our region too, we all meet in March, I believe it's March 10th, come together as a whole with all emergency managers and law enforcement in this region and Webster.
Move to approve the, go ahead and proceed to apply, second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other questions?
Jamie, is that a match, percentage match, or is that a 100% grant?
It's 100%.
That one's a 100% of, yep.
We've done that for years.
Yep, and we work locally with all of us.
All right, any other, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number 13, action to approve the application of the HMEP Grant Funds.
That is another one, that's just to approve the application to move forward for hazardous materials, the emergency preparedness grant. That's always one I get confused. Typically, that's about a $3,000 grant that we go after, and what that does for us is it provides two trainings locally for our hazardous materials response incidents center.
Move to approve.
Move forward.
Okay, motion by Johnson. Did Waterman second that, or was Van Dusen? I don't know which one was saying.
Go ahead, Charlie did.
Waterman, okay. Waterman, okay. Any other questions, comments for Jamie? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
And this is a requirement of the Department of Legislative Audits, that grants that the county is going to apply for need to be approved by this board.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jamie.
Jamie, do you know when that P25 compliant radio?
Fall of 2022. It was 2023. Now, they've moved that up just locally. That's why, I don't know.
All of our radios and stuff, compliance of...
Compliance on that state digital trunking system. That would be the thing.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. All right, so for item number 14, action on appeal for denial of burial assistance. I think we're going to momentarily go into executive session, since it, just for...
It's confidential.
Yeah, confidential reasons to have a brief discussion, then we'll come out of executive session, and then we will make our decision on that.
So for those watching online, we're going to shut off the camera and the microphone. We'll leave the stream going, so we'll just come, just listen for voices in the background if you're actually listening to our stream.
Move to go into executive session.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We will go into a quick exec.